Next is community forum. I did have Mr. Bishop and Mrs. Utech reach out yesterday. Is that just be your time?
You want us to be here, is that okay? Or you want us to come in front? It doesn't... We wanted to come to the board as well as the community to start talking or getting conversation going about our track and field surfaces. Just a little bit of background, of course, I don't know if you guys have been out to the track, it's a little bit old. So am I. And I wear sometimes the same way that the track does out there. It's pretty wrinkly and pretty cracked and in pretty tough shape. Just a little bit of information about just even this year. This year we had sixty-six track athletes out. We were the junior high two-eight-one girls conference champions, junior high two-eight-one boys conference champions, two-eight-one girls conference champions, four-time defending now, two-eight-one boys conference champions, first time since 2013, region three B boys champions, and region three V boys champions. First time that that's been done for us ever. Fifteen athletes qualified to compete at Howard Wood, twenty-three athletes were taken to the state track meet, twelve of the school records this year out of the possible thirty-eight were broken. Our main reason for coming and talking to you, bringing those numbers also, is just our ability to compete and being able to improve our facility is something that we've looked at. I know in the five years that I've been here and even back to when I was here before in school, back to nineteen ninety-four, the track has seen its better days. Our practice and competition is a little bit tough because when we're practicing, we can't always practice as well as what we can just because of the fact that the surface is tough. Probably one of the biggest things that we have, of course, is shin splints that go along with that. It's rough on the joints, rough on that type of thing. And it's tough because we can't wear spikes, so we are not able to practice the same way that we would for our competitions. So between the shin splints, sore knees, et cetera, nice to have a newer surface. Along with that, we have started a pole vault program that is five years old. This year we did take three pole vaulters to state. But our closest place to compete in those is order, Gettysburg, and Esteline is the closest places that we have to compete there as well. Home meets now are at Miller, of course, this year. Miller had issues with their tracks, so our home meet was at Redfield. And in the meantime, we do have what I would consider the nicest facility in the area for volleyball and basketball. And we get compliments on that all the time, just because of the fact that what was done there was done there correctly. And for track and for football, I think that could be also, a new facility could be a source of pride, not only for the current athletes that are going out, but might spur on additional athletes to come out and be not only a source of pride for them, but for the entire school and as well for the community. Just looking to start conversation at this point about ways to look to improve, fundraise, be involved in a sport that I know is absolutely the love of, not only mine and coaches, but a lot of our athletes also. And that's whether they're using it as their main sport, whether they're using it to improve theirs themselves for other sports, whether it's for their football, or basketball, or volleyball, and use it as a way for training. So I think it's time for us to begin at least the conversation about looking at a facility improvement. And to me, I guess, if we have the opportunity to move forward, I would like to look to move forward as a whole facility. It's nice to be able to practice on it, but if you're gonna go partway, I feel like we should go ahead and go all the way. Along with that, whatever it takes as far as dealing with fundraising, dealing with those things, I know that I'm more than willing, I get really excited just thinking about being able to have that improvement and what that means for some of our athletes, where they're not gonna have to go home with the short sore shins and have that ability to compete on that whole next level. And we're talking about, we took twenty-three kids to state this year, and I just imagine that if we have that opportunity to even improve our facility, not only are we gonna be taking that many and more, but we're also going to be looking at having the ability to compete that much harder as opposed to always just running on our track that sometimes we find easier to practice on our gravel roads, just because it's not as hard on our athletes' legs some days.
Anything else?
You know, the other thing that I do know is, we were, I was trying to get a gentleman here, because I've talked to different places about their facilities, different things that they've done. I know that Bainen Sports Surfaces was one of the places that, I believe it was Gettysburg that talked about, they did their surface. I had asked them to come up, actually, they got back to me today, they have the ability, they're planning to come up tomorrow at four o'clock in the afternoon to just look at our place, see what could be done, see what it would take to be able to give us a cost estimate as far as what's going on. I know that the original person told me just the surfacing part, where we're talking about doing the rubberized track to cover roughly five thousand square yards, which is a little bit short from what we have. He did give us a cost estimate on that at about two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. Again, as we move forward and stuff, you're looking at all the different things, there would be additional things that go along with that. I talked about the pole vault and how we had added that. Also, next year, we are looking at adding javelin because that will be a competitive event available for class B schools after they did this year with class double A, they're adding it for class A and B, I believe, as a competitive event next year as well. That'd be something else that we'll be looking at adding in there. And I'm excited because it's another chance for kids to compete and another chance for them to get a chance to qualify and to move on to that next level of stuff. And if you ever have any questions, I mean, we've talked, and I've talked with different members of the community, talked with different board members, talked with different people. I mean, if we wanna get a group together, need to get a group together, just looking to see what that next step is as far as what you would like to see done, or if that's something that we'd be able to look at moving forward with doing. Because if we don't act, of course, nothing's going to happen. So, but I like to be an action person, so definitely if there's an opportunity that we wanna move forward with it, I would love to be a part of that. And so would I. Not that I speak for other people, but I'm speaking right now.
May I speak?
Absolutely. Oh, I don't know, I can't. I can't tell you, go ahead.
I'm Corrine Cloussier, for all of you that don't know who I am. But anyway, I think it'd be wonderful. I mean, Warner just put in a new track this year too, and it's a great, but you know, we used to host the two-eight-one, you know, meet up here, the Jimmy Brerick meetup up here, and the people came to it, the kids came to it, I mean. And I'm quite close to the running, of course, I had grandkids that run, but I've seen where it has taken them. And I follow the Wolsey-Wessington kids, they're running, they're volleyball, they're basketball, they're football, the whole thing. But the track kind of tends to maybe take this, you know, like maybe gets pushed aside over the other sports sometimes. I'm not saying it in a bad way, but I don't mean, but it does, you know, like, oh, we can get by, we'll get by. But even seeing the kids practice, it's not, it's probably more dangerous for them to do any type of running on this track the way it is. I think it'd be phenomenal to complete this facility. You have got a beautiful gymnasium, you've got a beautiful school, you've got a great staff. It would be great to be able to get something done and get that track back up and running. I think you could really host some good events up here and keep those kids running and going. I mean, it's wonderful. I love it in the spring when I see the kids go live. It's like, oh, it's traffic, oh, it's prospecting, it's just, yeah. So anyway, I just like the way it's within, but I think it's well worth every penny that it would cost. And I know it would be costly, you know, I mean, I don't know what it costs Warner, but I've heard different, you know, but if you're gonna, if you want people to keep coming, that's, and like you said, you guys have a phenomenal track season again this year, and just keep that going. And to me, that would be a great way to start, is to get something going up here. My thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Do you want to share your information tomorrow?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to share your information that you get tomorrow?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely, we will. Then if anybody wants to come with, it's not, I mean, that might be something that the grounds, I know it's at four o'clock, it's kind of a funny time, but that's when he could, when he was coming through, I believe he's coming from Kansas or southern Nebraska, so that's kind of what would fit his schedule. So four o'clock, we'll be out here at the facility, so if anybody was interested or whatever. But definitely I will share that information also.
Just a question, because I don't know, but javelin, where, so you have your quarter-mile oval, where does javelin normally take place?
A lot of the places that have added it with this year with double A, and even down at Mount Vernon, a lot of them actually use their football field area. They would clear out a section of it, you need to, and I don't remember the exact measurements, I think it's thirteen feet wide at the base and then a certain distance across. Javelin's a lot different than what a lot of people think, it's not the metal tips anymore, it's just a rubber tip or whatever, so obviously that makes it a little bit safer. So a lot of have gone to that middle of the football field area. Again, that would be a challenge when we were looking at trying to figure out a revamped facility, but definitely, we sat down at track, state track at night and kind of had conversations about where we'd like to put different things and stuff. So it's kind of exciting to just sit and visit about those things, so.
Any other questions? All right, anybody else for community forum? Hearing none, conflict of interest with declarations. I do have an addition to the agenda, we're gonna add nine-point-ten trailer bolts. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition? Motion by Brooke, do I have a second? Second by Ashley, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carried. Communication and discussion items, administrative reports, business manager.
Okay, I just have one thing. I was gonna get something more wrote, but I did not. So I know it was asked last week about, or last month, about the S R funds. So I just wanted to point out, S R one funds, that all went towards the nurse, some desk, TriCaster, and some supplies. My S R two funds have been all budgeted out, and what that is helping go for is the school facilitator that we had, some speakers that pay for the reading curriculum. It is gonna help pay for the after-school program for F Y twenty-three, twenty-four, that's in the budget, we haven't heard about the grant yet. The retention fee, summer school for this summer, and the nurse.
Can I ask, what were the S R one funds and the S R two, just to refresh my memory?
So S R one fund, we got seventy-six thousand four hundred, four hundred and twenty-four S R two is two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand one hundred and nine. And so some of that stuff can be used for the next couple of years.
What, is there, what's the sunset on that? Like S R two, is that, yeah. Isn't a bracket in there?
I think like, oh, I can't remember, yeah, I, it's either twenty-three or four. And S R three, that is the one where this, sometime, I have three-hundred-and-nineteen thousand three hundred and thirty-one left to budget for. But so far, I have budgeted, we have budgeted for some mental health speakers, some workshops for the teachers, to replace some doors, the nurse, some after-school helpers for it. And also, we're gonna do the curriculum. And summer school for the next two summers after the summer, so F Y play three, play four. And so, yes, so so far that is for work, add on those things.
Okay, any questions, Pramie?
Elementary principal. So tomorrow, we begin summer school here for the kids K P five, I'll bash his one through five, because they're gonna be first, they are first graders now. So we have about sixty students coming, which is quite a bit, and that's all coming, you know, basically out of S R funds, because we didn't know about that grant money yet. Fingers crossed we did it. It'll be three weeks long, and on Thursdays, they usually go on their field trip, which we hadn't been doing a lot for field trips just because of everything going on at home. So they're going to Brownell Park Zoo, the Children's Museum, and the Discovery Center. So that would be starting up this month. And then in July, we have our second round of summer school, and that's teacher-selected students who maybe need to work on reading skills or math skills to try and keep them where they're at. We have fifteen students, and that's more of a one-on-one basis, small group. So that's what we're doing.
Secondary principal.
So Mr. Bishop touched on this, but the first thing I wanted to do was, and it's perfect because the coaches are here, congratulate you on a great season. They both were crowned region champions, and how many school, I didn't have the exact number of school records, but.
Twelve this year.
Right. So a lot of school history happened this break, which is huge. Congratulations to all the student athletes that competed at the state track meet, and then we did have the following that placed, and I just remember sometimes coaching and hoping we'd get someone to state. So what they did was phenomenal, what these student athletes did. So eighth place in the sixteen-hundred meter relay, we had Caleb Richmond, Carson Zomer, Moshe Richmond, and Joey Holperson. That same group of young men are in third place in the medley relay as well. Moshe also placed eighth place in the high jump, was it high jump or long jump? I put high jump.
High jump.
Maya Boomsma, sixth place in the long jump. And then we had a girls relay team that placed eighth place in the thirty-two-hundred meter relay, and that was Kendall Utech, Laney Utech, Kelsey Roberts, and Peyton McKemmons. So very great job on that. I want to thank Mrs. Stevens for doing such a wonderful job with graduation. She organizes everything, but then she was also the speaker, so she had, and she was a parent that day. So for everything she did, she does an amazing job with graduation. We have summer school that started last week also, and that is for students that need to recover credits from this school year. And so we have Julie Clark and Russ Utech splitting up days to work with those students, and those are online classes that they take. And if they pass those, they don't have to retake the class then that they had failed. If you've noticed at all, the sign has been replaced at the two-eight-one travel center, and now Brandy's in the process of getting the capability to be able to post on it. So it's getting a lot closer. The gentleman that's waxing the gym floor finished today, and so now that will cure for two weeks. And the way the weather is today, it might take a little bit for that to cure, but everything went very well, he said, so nice to have that done. We've got Shane, Ralph, Carla, and Lynette working on the summer cleaning list. And I drove by the bus barn on my way to school today, so they have the concrete poured, and so there is progress going on that as well, and that's why you see all the buses up here, because they had to get those out of there. Shane and I have been in contact with automated building controls, and if you see a fireman, please thank them, because every time there's bad lighting, the fire alarm goes off here. So they're now on a rotation of who comes up to check it. I found out. So please, please thank them, because I appreciate them coming up, because of course, our storms have all been like one or two in the morning. But they think they have a problem narrow down house, so that should be fixed very shortly. The Blackburn basement will be here tomorrow, and I think Jamie and Ted will be here to meet with them to look at that concrete, and have an impossible, that concrete in between the two buildings and the hallway, just to see if any of those cracks in the hallway have anything to do with what's happening outside too. And thank you, Jim, for that suggestion for them to come. It'll be interesting to see, I mean, we've looked at that with drainage and see what's happening, and a lot is happening with the ground, what's going on, so should have more on that next month. Thanks to Jeff and Sharon that are staying really busy, keeping the grounds mowed as well also. And then I just wanted to, with this being my last meeting, take the opportunity to thank all of the students, staff, school board members, and community members that I've worked with for the past twenty-five years. I have so many great memories of being a Wolsey Cardinal, so that dates me as well, Mr. Bishop. And a Wolsey-Wessington Warbird, and I wish Mr. Rice, Mrs. Hyder, and the rest of the staff the very best, so thank you very much, and good luck to Mr. Rice.
Thank you. That's what I have. All right, Mid-Century Report, we did not have a meeting this month, but I remember asking. Oh, no, I think we skipped a couple months. Okay, Core.
The only thing that I thought was really important was August tenth, they're doing the para training again. I didn't know if you were, like, the morning is like, just like the basics, and then the afternoon they get the educators or something. Just didn't know that.
Last year, we sent all of the paras, and that was a really good opportunity for them just to get together before school started too.
Number seven has approved consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Ted.
Same.
Second by Jamie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carried. Here we go, items poll. Action items, renew unfinished business, ExPOTEC contract twenty-two, twenty-three.
So every year, we renew, or we update the contract with ExPOTEC, and they kept the fees the same as they had done last year. And if you remember from last year, with Brandy doing a lot of work onsite, we were able to reduce that contract by sixteen thousand, and they kept that reduced rate for this year, so that will stay at thirty-one hundred per month plus applicable taxes to work with them.
Any questions on the contract?
Probably just the carbon and coffee, basically, last year's contract.
I do have one question. On there, it has that alterations and modifications of equipment, other than that authorized by ExPOTEC. Is she authorized by ExPOTEC, so they trained her? So that takes that piece, I just wanted to make sure.
So this will be the first summer, none of the machines will leave here. Even last summer, they took some, but they have worked with her this year that the machines will stay here, and they'll come help her as needed, but that'll save a lot of that back and forth.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the ExPOTEC contract twenty-two, twenty-three? Motion by Jamie, second by Brooke, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carried. Buildings and ground committee report landscape rock playground. Which one, Ian Freire, gonna talk?
Jamie. I started with that. It was about three weeks ago, we kind of did a walk-around of the building out front. We discussed getting that updated on the corner of the gym where you walk out, there's a downspout that dumps right in that corner, there's a nice little bathtub right there, so water just sits there and never leaves unless it's going under the building. Same thing, if you follow that wall down to the front offices here. So we discussed, and I think it was Mr. Rice's suggestion, maybe switch that landscape rock out and put some grass in there. We talked a little bit, did we ever find a play system? We had talked quite some time ago about maybe getting a play system for the playground back here.
I talked, I had a guy come here and tell me about, he said that with our playground, he said it looks like it's about, I don't know what he said, seven to ten years old. He said playground equipment has a fifteen-year lifespan. The problem with our playground is we still have a good five years out of a lot of our equipment, and if we bring anything else in, we have to take stuff out, because there has to be a certain amount of feet between all the playground equipment to make it work. So then I talked to him about, like, the cement and the gravel and putting down, oh, I don't even know what it's called, it's like the rubberized stuff that they put down and they make it hard. I talked about that with him, and he just did a playground for his school, and it was an extreme amount of money, like three-hundred thousand dollars. So then I talked about, could we just start with areas? And he said, yeah, I'll get back to you, and, you know. There, you're out, and those are small projects for those guys. We came in and said, oh, we just wanna do this a little bit, or just, it's not like the great big playgrounds that, you know, that can make tons of money out, so I guess it would be up to you guys.
We kind of discussed the P rock, gravel, or P rock and cement combination is kind of a bad thing. You know, kids, if they're trying to play basketball and there's a bunch of loose P rock, somebody's gonna fall and can get hurt. So we discussed probably getting rid of the P rock out there.
My biggest, my biggest thing would be that big rock. Because I don't, it's hard to believe, but we have kids throw a big rock at each other, and the windows that are being broken aren't from the big rock, they're the big rock. I wanna get rid of that rock because it's dangerous. And to me, that would be the first thing that has to go, is the big rock, scoop that big, and I talked to Shane about it, and to scoop all that big rock out of here and get rid of it, and plant grass in some of those areas now. I don't know, I agree with the P rock too, I just don't know what we would put down. Do you have an idea what we would put down?
Grass.
We're tough, kids are tough on playgrounds, so I would say probably wouldn't even be able to beat grass, it would have to be like turf. You know what I mean? It had, and that's very expensive as well, so I mean, just, and it's fine with me, I'm all in for spending lots of money on the playground, I just want you to know it's gonna be a lot of money, like probably, but if we wanted to make it phenomenal, it'd probably be half a million dollars. I'm not kidding, it's a lot of money, and I'm willing to spend.
Well, yeah, they start getting rid of the big rock out here, I mean, you've got a skid loader.
Right.
If they move it, get a pile, I can come in with the side dump and haul it all and get rid of.
We just didn't know, because we didn't know what the plan was with the front, because that's kind of been a problem, that front area, so we didn't know if we should save some of that rock to put in the front, or should we put, I didn't know what we were gonna do, but if we're gonna plant it to grass, we might not need any rock anywhere else.
No, I think on the front, we need to get a landscape person to come in and make sure that's done right, so we got the slope the way it needs to go, so the water gets to where it's supposed to.
Even if we put grass out there like you talked about, Jamie, there's gonna have to be quite a bit of permanent gutter work going in and with that, funnel that water.
The downspouts need to, you know, have some small concrete trough pour to get the water away from the building. I think that's the problem we've got back here too, when we're settling, my drainage just isn't proper. Ted, anything else on the cabin?
A plus.
Any questions for this committee?
And do you want me to have, like, I get a quote for the ground out there? I, I mean, I can, he was here already, so he's got, you know, all of our information. Do you want a quote, or just doing the, you know, the bottom of the playground in that rubberized, that's what everybody's going to, is that rubberized stuff. I mean, it's up to you.
If I had my choice, I'd put turf out there over the rubber, because the rubber's still there.
There'd be no harm in looking into some of that all leather turf.
Because rubber will look really nice for a little while.
I, I mean, I can, he was here already, so he's got, you know, all of our information. Do you want a quote, or just doing the, you know, the bottom of the playground in that rubberized? That's what everybody's going to, is have rubberized stuff. I mean, it's up to you.
If I had my choice, I'd put turf out there over the rubber, because the rubber is still there.
There'd be no harm in looking into some of that all leather turf.
Because rubber will look really nice for a little while, and then it's gonna end up in piles here and washed away here.
Well, it's not that though, it's, it's hard, no, it's hard rubber, so they put kind of like that rubber down, and then they put type of, some type of hard sealing coat over it, and so it's, oh, I don't know what to explain it like, it's, it's.
Almost like what some tracks have.
Yeah, it's like, it's kinda like a track, it's got a little bit of rubber to give in case you fall off the monkey bars or something, but it can't move. So, that's what he suggested everybody was doing, that and turf, we talked, but I thought if we could do a little bit of both, that'd be the best of both worlds. And if we're gonna, I don't know, would we plant real grass out front, or would we just put turf wood, preferably?
I, I don't know if it matters or whatever, and I'm sorry to speak out of turn, but this guy that's coming tomorrow, maybe we could get a discount.
Do it all at once.
At the same time.
Mr. Bishop, if you get a free leg and a track, you might give us a little free playground.
I mean, the worst you can do is ask and then you can just say no, that's all, so. I mean, if you want me to ask them about this out here, I sure can too.
That would be great, yes.
And if you can get some quotes for turf.
Okay, I will be back, yep, I'll call it back.
All right, hallway carpet quotes.
So I've got, um, the samples here, and one is from Dwayne's Carpet Outlet and one is from the Carpet Center. And so Carpet Center bid for, and this is to do the high school hallway, and going to the library as well, so kind of that T shape over there. And so from the Carpet Center, this is a dyed nylon, you know, when I was thinking carpet, I thought in a hallway, I don't know how well that'll do, and they said that's what all the schools are going to do, that's what they're putting in. So, this is a dyed nylon, and the Carpet Center bid for that project came in at thirteen thousand six hundred sixty dollars and eighty-eight cents for these options. And then at Dwayne's Carpet Outlet, she had two options, uh, one is on the bottom and one is here. She put that on the same, if you looked at that, she put one quote on the same page, and the two bids are sixteen thousand ninety dollars or eighteen thousand ninety dollars. And the eighteen thousand ninety dollars is the nylon that's similar to the quote from the Carpet Center.
Are they on the tiles?
Mm-hmm, so if something happens, you can pull the tile up. And probably after you guys meet with Blackburn tomorrow, I mean, I can't believe those cracks in the hallway will affect that, but you'd wanna know that before you did anything with that, but.
Any questions on that? Are you wanting an answer tonight?
I mean, that's up to you guys by the time, if you want it installed before school starts, then you need to have an answer tonight. And if it doesn't work out with whatever Blackburn says, you know, but if it does work out, then it'd be good to go, you should proceed with it.
Okay.
Are there any warranty differences between the two?
And that's installation, everything.
This one says T, take up whole carpet, or do they have to take that out? The tile? Do you think, or do they cover it?
No, maybe they cover that, so she put, that is.
For Andrew?
Thirteen, no, that's thirteen hundred dollars, so. So Dwayne's Carpet Outlet would be a little less than what she quoted at sixteen thousand ninety.
You guys wanna see?
So the two that are comparable, did any of, are those in your packets?
They're in the package.
Okay, okay.
So the two that are comparable, the prices are about sixteen thousand dollars, probably without doing that, about fifteen, and then thirteen thousand sixteen sixty. I guess one thing with the Carpet Center, the bid came in less, and there are options that he has that has the gold in it that matches what we have in between the gym and the offices and comments too, so. Or these are all shades without that.
The other tile is just cracking, right, it's not breaking, but we don't need to take it out?
It's cracking.
It's just that it's not coming in where we live the tile over it, it's gonna get holes in it.
No, it's just cracking, I mean, it's, what year was that building built to?
Twenty years ago. It's a tile like this?
Yes.
Like what's on this?
Yep, but this is a tile.
Yep.
I would make a motion to go with the Carpet Center.
Okay.
Pending, pending, uh, no structural issues following Blackburn inspection tomorrow.
Motion by Jamie, second by Kevin, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Would you guys pick it out?
Motion carried. So it's done? Pick it out? Thank you. You want me to pick it out? There we go, just don't pick red.
You pick the red. No, I didn't add, I picked the gray wool.
Perfect.
Or the gray and black wool.
All right. Teacher pay for CNA follow-up work.
So we had talked about that last month, and that's for Mary Lou McGurra to come and continue her work with the elementary, middle school, and high school groups that she started this year. She got back to me and said that those monthly meetings will take about an hour of time. So my recommendation would be to pay the teachers what we did this year, twenty-five dollars an hour, if it's outside of their contracted time.
Questions for Jennifer? Do I have a motion to approve twenty-five dollars per hour for outside time for the teachers participating in the CNA follow-up?
So moved.
Motion by Jeff.
Second.
Second by Ashley, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nine point five, approved contracts. High school math. Okay, um, high school math was offered to Lori Keeler. We will have to approve that one pending the decision of the Huron School District. They had their meeting at five-thirty, I got, I don't know, I got sidetracked and did not listen to the meeting. So I do not know if they approved her resignation, so we will have to approve that one on grounds that they approved her resignation. Do I have a motion to approve Lori Keeler's contract for high school math?
Motion.
Motion by Jamie. Yep, you got that Amy, right?
What?
Pending, um, their approval of the resignation.
Yeah.
Second by Ashley.
Motion out.
Jamie and Ashley, I don't know, I have so many people doing it. Okay, so I have a motion by Jamie, a second by Ashley to approve the contract pending Huron's resignation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. The next two, um, we had a group made up of five individuals. Correct. Um, we interviewed for K through twelve PE athletic director. Um, we also interviewed for head football, head basketball coach. Those, the committee will recommend Austin Kemnons for K through twelve PE, and athletic director, and Hayden Hooks for head football, head basketball. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the offer of the K twelve PE athletic director to Austin Kemnons?
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
I'll second it.
Second by Jeff, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Do I have a motion to offer head football and head basketball coach to Hayden Hooks?
So moved.
Motion by Ted.
So.
Second by Jamie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Open enrollments, we have Woolsey Westington twenty-three through dash fifteen through twenty-three dash seventeen.
And one more came in.
Yeah.
So.
Through eighteen.
Through eighteen.
Okay.
Yep. So three of those would be going into the sixth grade, and one would be a senior. My recommendation would be to approve all of those.
Any questions on those? Do I have a motion to approve all four open enrollments?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kevin, I think, second by Ashley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Set budget hearing.
So the second Monday is July eleventh. And the big question is, do you want to have a budget hearing at six-thirty, meeting at seven, or seven and seven?
I don't, Mr. Rice, what is your, do you have a?
Can we meet at noon?
Nope.
I'm an early as possible.
No, no.
No, I'm, I'm an early as possible guy, so.
Is everybody okay with six-thirty and seven?
I will be leaving here by that time too, so.
Okay. So we will have the budget hearing, we will set the budget hearing for six-thirty, regular board meeting as planned at seven. Have worked?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. First reading of Narcon, Narcan policy. Julie, thank you, you did an amazing job, and thank you for answering all my questions that are, there are questions and home calls and. It was very, very nice. Did we decide we do not wait our first reading of the motion, or we do?
I don't think so.
I'll just say that you guys had the right one. All right. Live ticket proposal.
If you watch online sports in the area, you'll probably see that a lot of our area schools have gone with live ticket. So Brandy had been in contact with them, and Sam had been in contact with them, and they came to meet with Sam and Brandy toward the end of the school year, and then two gentlemen came last week just to look at the equipment that we already have. And a breakdown of that was on the first page, the total was six thousand two hundred twenty-nine dollars, but may not be that much because they decided they could use the, the equipment that we have as well. So, if you go with them and you lease, it's one hundred dollar per year plus what you see on that page, and we get twenty-five percent of profits from advertisers, so they contact area businesses and see if they want to advertise on that, because how, if you guys watch ballgames from Old Town, don't they? You'll see the ads come across then, or they'll play the ads, um, in between. If you buy all the equipment, you get fifty percent of the advertising profits. So the benefits of switching to live ticket, right now, we're not really with the system, it's just we set it up. So the AD set it up, and if he couldn't, I was there, Brandy sets it up quite a bit too. So if you go with live ticket though, the software is easier to use, they have on-call support during each production in case anything goes wrong. Right now the on-call support was whenever one of us was at the game, would run up and see what we could do with it, so. They have continuous training, they're very hands-on, they could livestream concerts and other events that are in the commons, so instead of just having those as taped, like what we do, um, they could install equipment to do that. They do all the advertising with businesses. Live SD high school sports updates the role across the bottom of the screen so you can see scores from area games. You end up making some money from the advertising, and they can use the cameras that we do already have. So, this was put together by Brandy, and she, I asked her, what would your recommendation be? And she said her recommendation would be to lease it for the first year and see how everything goes, because you're still gonna be getting back twenty-five percent from advertising anyway. And he had just come from Miller, who, they got a tremendous amount of ads and they're just making a lot of money because businesses want to get, more and more people are watching these from home, because they can watch them anywhere, so. That was her suggestion, would be to do the lease for a year, because then it's, you know, one year, and if it doesn't work out, I can't believe it won't work out, because I watched a lot of games on it and it's high quality, and if something happens like I said, it would be Mr. Rice there like, on the phone going, yep, thanks for letting us know, so we're kicking and running out, go ahead.
May I speak?
Yes.
Uh, my previous school, that was one of the first things that I did, is get on with live ticket. We used Essert funds to purchase the equipment because of health and safety. And, uh, I actually went with the gentleman, so, uh, he didn't have to cold call, because I knew people. Went in business by business, told them what it could do, told them what a sponsorship would do. First year, we got a check for eighty-five hundred dollars, because we bought it, like I said, with Essert funds, eighty-five hundred. Took care of it, and then we ended up answering, uh, we paid for an advisor to do that, and then the number of games and everything else that they had to do, we were able to offer, uh, CTE credits to kids that signed up to do that stuff. So there was production, making commercials, all of that stuff that came as a result. And, uh, if you ask me to do it again, I'd do it in a heartbeat.
So would you suggest just going ahead and buy?
I'd buy it, if we had Essert funds available, I'd buy it. And then all of a sudden, you look, we paid ourselves back the very first year, it was five thousand two years ago, we made it five hundred. So we were, we were plus, we were in the black already after one year.
Just have one question, is Santel okay with the ads showing up on their station when the games are playing?
I don't know if she has contacted them, I'm trying to think of a school down there that, whether, do they do live ticket though?
Well, Springs has, I don't know what they use, but they have advertisements, I don't know how they get them there.
Well, in, in Huron, they used to have their information page, and they had their, put it down, like the radio station anymore, because people said that was pre-advertising or something, so just wanna make sure it's.
Yeah.
Okay with the Santel, that, you know, they're, they're fine with that ads showing up.
Okay.
Just a question.
Yep.
Good question.
Yep, thank you. And they would have it all ready? Will it do football then? Really? On Santel's show?
Right, it would be, you know, just like you watch ours, except there would be someone else manning every.
Okay.
What about cancer from a distance?
We've been getting commentators.
They could do that. Right.
But we, we, I paid a, I paid a teacher twenty-five bucks to, to do that. I said twenty-five bucks and I'll buy you a Coke and a hot dog, he was so.
We have Ted, so you have to buy Ted a hot dog and a Coke.
Ted, Ted.
Get a dog and a Coke.
He must have it for free. Now we have to pay him.
Wasn't it Springs does the new slide? Oh, they do. When on both sides? Oh, yeah, okay.
I just know because we watch the breaks, so. Any other questions about this? Any other questions about this? Does anybody have a preference on leasing or, or buying outright?
I would make a motion to purchase the equipment and whatever we need, not just everything that's on the list, I'm sure our tech coordinator can open that.
I have a motion from Ted to purchase the equipment. Do you have a second? I have a second by Brooke, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. At this time, we'll go into executive session.
Trailer quotes.
Trailer.
Oh, yeah, nine, ten.
Yep.
Um, trailer quotes.
So Shane contacted me last week and he was going to try and get bids and he was able to get bids. So that's why we did get that added. The school does not own a trailer to haul tree branches to. Anytime we move furniture back and forth between storage up and down there, it's all, um, manual labor. The main thing would be cleaning up trees and things like that. We borrow Jeff and Sharon's things quite a bit to do that stuff. So he asked if I would bring, um, quotes to possibly purchase a trailer. He had two quotes from Prentar Equipment and that is who we lease the tractor through, through TJ Stevenson here. The first one is for a twenty nineteen bulk order, twenty-two foot equipment trailer. Tandem axles, pull-out ramps, not much for sides, you know, just the small, and that's five thousand dollars. And then there is, they also have an option of a fourteen foot dump trailer, channel steel mainframe, twenty inch bed height. So you should probably haul more in there and keep it in there. That one is twelve thousand, I can hand that down so you guys, there is a picture of that one. And of course, the time that they really use that is summer. So that's why I had you add that to the agenda to see if that would be a possibility to purchase one.
Do we rent it from Sharon right now? Do we pay her for it?
Sometimes they just break stuff up when we.
Probably shouldn't use personal equipment for schoolwork.
Do you have any idea if you.
And sometimes they use that little. That, that's all that he, that's all he contacted, yep.
I think before we purchase one, we should pursue brand manufacturing for a trailer quote. That's my.
There's a possibility, there might be one on federal surplus.
Right, that'd be an excellent idea, Ted.
Could you say one similar to that one, Kevin?
They, I don't know that they manufacture or have on-hand dump trailers. I think they've made them in the past. The other style trailer, they've gotten about, they've got.
Yes.
But I wouldn't feel comfortable approving this until we get a break from somebody besides the premier. They probably pay taxes in this district.
That's just my gut reaction. And having a trailer would for sure be, uh, an asset, uh, you know, what they have around here.
Is there anywhere else in Huron that we can get multiple west?
West, west trailers. Felling trailers too. New company that Larson Cable Trailers used to be, there's no felling trailers.
I have a question. Isn't a dump trailer a great idea? They make sure they get heavy enough so they haul the skids here on if they need to haul it here on the effects or whatever.
That'd be the next.
Save the delivery fee and everything else or whatever, but make sure you can do all things with a dump trailer.
We start trailer shopping too, that could overwhelm pretty fast.
I don't know, you want Shane to do it? Do you want Mr. Rice to do it?
Actually, we're going to meet sometime, you know, that certain piece that's all the other situations.
You know, if it's less than twenty thousand dollars.
I was gonna say you can authorize, no.
Isn't that correct?
Have Mr. Rice and Shane kind of.
I wouldn't have the power, given them the authority to get one as long as they do a little more research. Otherwise, it's gotta be. Does that still matter to you then? Twenty?
I think it's twenty.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Um, now we will go into executive session, South Dakota Code of Ed Law, one dash twenty-five dash two for personnel. Um, at this time, I'll ask everybody to step out.